All right, we are here for our work session agenda Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. It is about 2:10 PM. Our first appointment is with Tracy Good, our clerk, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, a couple of months back, I brought to you a request to be able to hire a temporary election staff member. When I gave my presentation then, I told you that I would be bringing a titled clerk up to work in the election department, and then I would like to hire another temporary employee for the election season this year. It's going to cost approximately $26,000 to have this temporary employee. I would like to start this person June 1st, so therefore, some of that will come out of this current fiscal year's budget, which I would not need a budget adjustment for that. However, it would increase my budget request for the upcoming fiscal. So I would like to be able to have that approval going forward, so I can get that in the works and get someone on board.
Very good. Are there questions for Tracy?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
The temp that you're talking about hiring, is this from a temp agency?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
So we don't have any of the back problems or anything like that?
Right, we don't have any of the employer contributions as far as benefits, that type of thing. They are fully vetted. They do have to undergo, you know, a background check, drug and alcohol testing, just as they would if they were county employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for our clerk? All right, well, I don't think you're hearing problems or concerns, so I think you can move forward. I don't know if we need a motion on this, but very good. I guess we don't. So proceed, thank you.
Thank you. So that's my first request. Second, second request. I'm doing it in stages, so I wouldn't, I don't want to overwhelm you fellas. Also, back a couple of months ago, I talked about some statutory changes as far as how ballots are being returned, voted ballots are being returned to the clerk and/or the polling locations or Election Central, as we call it here in Natrona County. We've always had the voted ballots sealed with security tape, so on and so forth, but it's very specific in statute now that they have to be in locked bags. So that means I need to buy more supplies for my polling locations and make sure that I'm in compliance with statute. So doing a bunch of research, looking at our procedures, I would need to request approximately $9,000 adding to my current budget to allow me to purchase these supplies for the security of our ballots.
Commissioner North?
Have you got that available right now, or do you need to bring that into your budget?
I would need a budget amendment, Commissioner North.
Okay. I don't think we have a whole lot of choice if it's statutorily required, so.
Well, we can't at our work session. Are there other questions for our clerk on this issue? Has there been any discussion about the Secretary of State's office paying or contributing some amount to the different clerks across the state?
Mr. Chairman, none whatsoever. We also have a uniformity document that the County Clerks Association has compiled, but we've been doing this, obviously securing our ballots as they come, being transported by law enforcement, so on and so forth. But I now want to, with this new statute, with the language, I'm going to lock these bags with seals. Obviously, we have chain of custody logs that are, have come forth since 2022. So just having seals and chain of custody logs and just, you know, securing them to the best ability that we can.
Very good. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
My question was more broad than you thought. Will we ever need a motion to do this? I know we can't do it here, but do we need a motion at some point?
We will take care of that, I think, at the end of the fiscal year on budget amendments for this sort of thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Budget amendments are done by a resolution.
Very good. Sounds like we have to move forward with this, so feel free.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an appointment with Rachel Spear, Keith Tyler, Platte River Trails. The purpose is sponsor for a rail trail extension and pedestrian bridge project. Who'd like to come forward?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you didn't look like Keith Tyler.
My name is Nat Steinhoff, and I am the current Board President for Platte River Trails Trust. We really appreciate your time today, especially on such short notice. Rachel's been working really hard to get everything put together. I'll give you the really short version, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. So one of the projects that has been in the works with our organization for coming up on, I believe, three decades, has been a connection between essentially Hat Six and EKW from a trails perspective.
And what's EKW?
Ethnis K. Wilk.
Edna Campbell Wilkins.
Thank you. I recorded for posterity to see me fumble that. My apologies. So it's been in the works for us for a long time. At one point in the past, we even had an agreement, worked out with the county, is my understanding, in the 90s, where the county contributed some funds to go towards this project, which had been subsequently used for something else, and the project hadn't come through. We were recently made aware on March 15th of some funds that are available through the Wyoming Recreation Grant System, which actually came from some dollars out of the tourism office. And we had a really quick turnaround on that, and we're hopeful that that grant will allow us to deal with the soft surface nature of that pathway between Hat Six and EKW. Where we are asking for your help today is a piece of that puzzle for us, is how to get that trail from the south side of the highway, crossing people over to the actual park itself. So the plan right now is an overpass, and we would like to apply for a TAP grant to pay for that pedestrian bridge that would allow people to cross actually into the park. The deadline to even submit a, not a letter of intent, but a statement of intent, is the 14th of this month, and there seems to be a pretty large push right now, kind of across all of Wyoming and even more nationally for the rail trail system. So we think this might be a really prime time for us to work on this particular project. What we're asking from you today is not that you give us blessing on the eventual being our sponsor for that TAP grant, but rather that you at least sponsor, agree to sponsor us for the purposes of submitting that statement of intent. And then, of course, work with you after, and that's due in July. July, the actual TAP grant would be due, and of course, we would look towards working with you directly to make sure you remained interested and supportive of that actual grant. This is just for that initial support letter that we're required to have in by mid-month. It's worth noting that as a part of that TAP grant, we're willing to commit to finding all of the matching funds for that TAP grant ourselves. We would not be asking you in the future, as the county, to in some capacity, participate in the matching fund portion for the TAP grant. Rachel, did I miss anything?
Nope, that's a great summary.
Commissioner North?
I've got a couple of questions. Actually, I've got several. One of the biggest concerns I have is that the county is going to be responsible. If we sign off on this TAP grant, aren't we going to be the ones that are going to be responsible for the maintenance of that bridge in the future?
No, we believe at this point that because the bridge crosses from state property to state property, that it would be state maintenance. We're not entirely sure, but we're investigating that, and that would be something we would determine before we send in the formal application for the TAP grant. Really, the statement of intent is opening the door for the opportunity to apply. If we do not put forward the SOI, then we cannot apply in July.
Okay, but that's not, but you don't know that for sure.
Not for sure.
Okay. Reading through your proposal too, it shows that you had approximately 560 or there about people that responded to Facebook and Twitter and whatever else, and yet, as far as existing trail use, you only show that you have 110 people that are existing using on, this is on page four, sorry. Yeah. So it only shows that you actually had 110 people that were utilizing bikes, 60 running, and 92, you know, walking and stuff like that. But those are in town. That's on existing trails, correct?
Yes.
So what is the anticipated use of this trail in the future if it's completed?
I couldn't give you actual solid numbers. I could give you trail data, which is in the hundreds of thousands, of course, each year in the trail system, the parts that Platte River Trails Trust is part of, and in combination with the city. What we expect is that there would be a tremendous increase because of the access to the park itself. We're adding about 2.1 miles from the existing rail trail. I'm not entirely sure if we have up-to-date rail trail-specific data, but I could get that information from the City of Casper. But in terms of full numbers, I couldn't say until we saw the actual fruits of the project.
Okay, because that's one of my biggest concerns. Going from Hat Six out there to the park, it's not like the stuff in the middle of town.
Right.
I mean, going from Rad Park, you know, to Robertson Road in that area, where a lot of the others are highly used, and I know they're highly used because they're easy access and everything else, whereas the location of this one, I've got serious questions about.
I can appreciate that, and also, if I could say that I think the idea here with the rail trail is an extended stretch, a longer stretch of trail, continuous trail, and yes, there are a handful of intersections in between and some safety issues to address. But I think it'd be more appealing to cyclists, for example, people who are looking for longer lengths of trail than what we provide with just the river trail, is the longest trail at this point. This would put the Casper Rail Trail up there in terms of long trails, which cyclists enjoy. But access to the park was the greater goal, pedestrian access to the park, because that doesn't exist now.
I'd like to say, I think Edna's Kimball Wilkins State Park is fairly well utilized by the public. I think I have used as a running trail, the rail trail all the way up to the Hat Six Road, and then there are no good options. And so you get to that point, and then you have to navigate the semi-trucks and the overpass on the interstate, and, you know, kind of freaks people out, because there aren't that many people. There's not much pedestrian or bike traffic out that far. So I think that, you know, there are some pretty cool recreational, there's a pretty cool recreational opportunity here that would help with that connectivity, and it's also a safety issue. So I don't have any problem or concern with this initial statement of intent stage, and then we can always learn more and find out more in terms of maintenance and repairs and our obligations and the costs down the road. But in terms of the statement of intent to meet your deadline, I don't have a problem with it. I understand the situation that you're in. You just found out about it a couple of weeks ago. So are there other questions or comments for?
I just have a comment.
Commissioner Laird?
I actually knew Edna's Kimball Wilkins when I was a little boy. She's a great lady, and she did a lot for the community. And then it used to say, she'd run for the legislature, she didn't, it cost her $10 for a filing fee, and she'd win overwhelmingly. And people would say, if she passed away and ran, she'd still win. So it always is dear to my heart when I hear her name. And I like the idea of what you're proposing. As a commissioner, I always like to know if it's going to cost us any money, you know, and what it might cost in the future. But what you're saying now is you just want something from us, saying we support a grant, and then as I understand, it's all going to be built on state property, and it sounds like we won't have to pay any money to get it built or going? Is that what you're telling me?
We would certainly investigate, as a part of the process, who would be responsible for ongoing costs in the future. What we're asking for today, to your point, is just support of our ability to submit the statement of intent. We completely recognize that you may have questions in the future before the actual application is sent in, to make sure it's still in accordance with your wants and needs and desires for the future. So we're just looking for that statement of intent today, and after we've secured that, if you were to do so, then we could do all of the research you needed us to, to address any concerns around how much might it cost you in the future for upkeep.
Thank you.
But we are not asking also, to your point, for any matching funds for the TAP grant, were we to make that application with your blessing and then receive it.
Commissioner Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I've got the same concerns about easements and da-da-da-da-da. That's fine. The one thing, the document you sent is with the surveys and the like, that's almost three years old. You might want to look at updating that. But as far as just opening up the initial volley for the, for the application, then yeah, no, I have no problem with that myself, just opening this up with intent. So, but I'd update your data a little.
Commissioner North?
One more question. If that's going to go from state to state, can the state perks hang off on the TAP grant, or does it have to be us?
I believe it has to be the county or city as our sponsor.
I don't know the answer to that immediately.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mill?
Have you also talked to YDOT? I mean, that bridge and all those easements, they're probably theirs or under their jurisdiction, so it'd be pretty, it may be moving things along a little faster if you talked to them, too.
Yes, there have been conversations with YDOT. My predecessor initiated those, and I think it's probably been about four years now since those talks were started in earnest. And we have done the survey work and prepared the easement and had some conversations, just nothing formal. This would be our next step.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any other questions. I think that the request is for us to take action at our meeting tonight to approve the sponsorship of the TAP statement of intent. We don't have a resolution in our packet, but I think tonight, someone can make a motion, and then we can vote on it and see which way that goes.
Thank you.
Thank you again for getting us in on such short notice. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next on our list is Lisa Scroggins, Library Director for an update. Greetings.
There we are.
My eyesight's going.
So I have a couple of things here for you. I'm going to first address, just a general, you can have those, those are extras. Just a general snapshot of the library during fiscal year '23 to date. Not quite through with fiscal '24, so we don't have that information for you. But things at your library are going well, and post-COVID every year seems to be improving. So there are seven important measures that I'm presenting here to you. If you look along the left side in the blue, we have return of investment services, e-content, circulation, library cards, which is just the number of users, patrons, and programs. This does not, this snapshot does not include a couple of things like databases, or meeting rooms, or training that we provide for the community through, like LinkedIn Learning and some of those resources. These are just kind of the bigger things, and I thought it'd be great for you to know. So if we look across this first tab, which is, or the first bullet, is programs, over 14,000 people in fiscal year '23 attended library programs. We offered 572. You can see that most of those were children's programs. We really value investing in the children of Natrona County, knowing that providing them literacy and literacy resources and opportunities just helps them in their educational pathway, and then helps create better citizens as they become adults and transition into the workplace. I would just call out, and I'm not going to read everything on this to you, but I would just point out that when we look at the numbers of attendees and the numbers of programs, Natrona County Public Library really averages higher than libraries of a similar type in a similar community across the nation, and certainly higher than those in our regional cohort. We offer more programs, and we have higher attendance, which is an indicator that we are meeting the needs of the community with our programming. And then if we look at patrons, that tells you the visitor count. You can see it's over 300,000 people visited the library. That's a little different than circulations, because not everybody who visits the library checks out an item. Sometimes people use them in the library or onsite, and sometimes they're attending programs, and sometimes they are using our computers. But over 300,000 in-person visits at our main campus here in Casper, that's still just a little bit slow post-COVID, but we're bouncing back and bouncing back stronger than ever. You can see that the average number of daily visitors in fiscal year '23 was just under 1,000. And then we have information here on library cards. I will point out that over 31% of the residents of Natrona County have an active library card. I emphasize the word "active" because while not all libraries do this, Natrona County Library does go through and delete people from our system if they haven't used their cards in a couple of years. Off the top of my head, I think that we changed that to three years when I came eight years ago, and prior to that, I think it was more in the neighborhood of eight to 10 years. And that really wasn't an accurate reflection of active card users, and so these are all people who have used their cards in the last 24 months, and that is good. It may actually be 12 months, but I know it's at least 24 months. You can see here, the next tab is print circulation, followed by e-content. We circulate a lot of materials, and as you know, those materials are purchased with one-cent funds. Over 400,000 items were circulated out of the print materials, over 100,000, over 130,000 of our digital content. One out of every four items that we circulate is digital. I think that's an indicator of current and future trends. And we, over the e-content, we have 3,716 people are using Libby, and that's what used to be overdrive. So that's our digital content for books and streaming items. The next thing is services. We do some unusual services. We do have several notaries on staff. We provide notary services for free, and it is a very popular service. We also are a passport application acceptance facility, and we assisted over 500 people with passport applications. And then we do outreach. And outreach is where a librarian goes out into the community. Perhaps they go to a school, or maybe to a nursing home, maybe to the Boys and Girls Club, and we host a program of literacy and reaching people where they are, and that's incredibly important. And then the last line here, I think, is probably when we look at investments of funds, and people are typically here needing commitment from the county commission, saying we need some funding for one reason or another, and goodness knows, I've certainly sat here in front of you and done the same, and I will very soon during the budget cycle. But it's important for you to know what the return on that investment is. So when we look at the portion of the library budget that is funded from county funds, and then looked at the impact, $5.71 is your return on the investment for every dollar of the county funds that has contributed. That drops a little when you look over to the right to total funding, because the impact stays the same, but a proportion of our funding, as you know, comes from other sources, whether it be grants, or our foundation, or our friends. And so that drops the total return on investment to $4.70, which is really still a strong impact to our residents. The number here in the middle, the $14.5 million, that's the total value of trackable services to our citizens. So when you come to the library and check out a book, there's a value attached to that book, and by checking it out of our collection, that essentially did not come out of your pocket, and so that's a savings to the community. There's also a savings, so that is what this $14.5 million, that's the crux of where that comes from, is the value of circulated items. And then it also includes the value of using a meeting room, which we do not charge for, or using the studio, or whatever services we have. So that's just a snapshot. That's just a quick little picture of what's going on at your library. So with regard to this snapshot, because I have another thing I'd like to talk about in a minute, do we have any questions about the snapshot of the impact of a library to our community?
Are there any questions for Lisa on the fiscal year '23 library snapshot information she's gone over with us? Well, thank you. It's concise, and it's, I think, a tribute to how the community is impacted in a positive way by the library. I don't know if you have this on your website. I kind of wish we had it in our packet so that the public could take a look, but I think that it's part of, you know, kind of a PR thing that would, and is really helpful to you, and I know Commissioner Laird and I have both mentioned that before. So thanks for putting this together.
Yes, sir. And to the point about, I do apologize for not getting it in time for the packet between some illnesses between myself and some staff members. We just didn't have it available at that time. But we have put this out on our personal social media, so it's been on Facebook and Instagram, our two primary social medias, for quite some time. And I will just point out, we will update this for the fiscal year in July, and at that time, I will bring you the current numbers for the fiscal year that we are just concluding. So then, time permitting, I'd also like to chat with you about another issue. So as you know, or as you likely know, the First Interstate Bank was recently put on the market at $8 million, and due to the construction of that building, I proposed to my library trustees that we should explore that as an adaptive reuse project, and perhaps renovate it into the new home of the Natrona County Library. It is, has robust engineering. It's a concrete construction, and so there were several things that made it seem like a viable idea. We felt like if this worked, we would be able to perhaps come to this commission and with an idea or a proposal for a project that could result in the new home of a library, and that we could also be saving a landmark or a historic building in our community. We felt like it had the potential to be a win-win solution, and it looks like that's not to be the case. So we had a lot of things to explore when we looked at this property. before we even got to the point to come to this commission. And as you know, I didn't come to this commission with this project. And I just want to tell you why we are abandoning this idea. For context, buildings, when they're built, and I, and I feel like probably you know that, but I think it's important to put it out there. They have what's called a live load capacity, which establishes the uniform code minimums for different types of uses. So like, for example, a house, if the parts of the house that are inhabited, most of those have a pounds per square foot range of 30 to 40 pounds per square foot. Most business offices have a minimum requirement of about 50 pounds per square foot. Some warehouses that require light storage have a requirement of 125 pounds per square foot. Now, when you compare that against the minimum code requirements for a library, a library in the places where we have stacks, which are pretty much scattered all over the building. Stacks are what we call shelves with our books on it and they hold our collection. The uniform minimum code says that those require 150 pounds per square foot. Now, the codes do say that you can perhaps petition for a lower pounds per square foot based on actual usage, but the minimum code suggestion is 150 pounds per square foot for the live load. And I found that to be something that, while in my line of work, I, I knew what that was, but I think a lot of people don't realize it. When I look at the codes, like the only places that I can see, and I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination, that require a heavier pounds per square foot live load minimum would be a warehouse for heavy materials or ice skating rinks or sidewalks and vehicle driveways. And that, they require 250 pounds per square foot. So the collection in a library is incredibly heavy and requires sound construction. So I've, I've provided with you, provided you a couple of reports here that I received, that I requested and received. One is from Lower Construction. Bob Lower is a structural engineer and he did an initial analysis of the facility of the First Interstate Bank building. And then the other is from MOA Architecture, who we asked, what is the viability of this project and what are some considerations that we need to be looking at to move forward? And just to kind of summarize, we were hoping this would be a cheaper avenue for a new library as opposed to a new construction. We wanted to save that downtown building and we felt like it would be positive for Casper and for the county. We realized that this, if we ventured down this, this lane, it would require some massive renovations. We knew that there's limited parking there. There's about eight, there's 80 spots in their garage. There are 17 surface spaces. And the potential to maybe include an additional 10 with the robust renovation of their old drive-through, which puts us just over 100. And then, then another disadvantage was Natrona County Library wouldn't need to occupy all those floors. That bank building is a total of eight floors. And we could probably put all of our, we would have to put all of our collections on the first two floors because of the weight bearing load of those floors. And then that puts a lot of empty space and the question mark of what you do with empty space. So the results of the evaluations on Bob Lower's report, and that's the one with the little blue logo in the corner. Basically, his summary is that levels, floors one and two are rated at 100 pounds per square foot. And if you recall, just a moment ago, I said that the, the uniform minimum code, without exception, unless you apply for an exception, is 150 pounds per square foot. Mr. Lower does calculate that the anticipated actual use, how we think that we will use with lower shelves and spreading things out would be 75 pounds per square foot. So it could be doable, but not ideal because I can tell you if I was there, what I would do. I can't speak to future directors and even promise that they would understand what the live load was. And so I can't promise what it would be in the future. So then his recommendation would be, in his letter says, get with an architect, a designer, and prove that you could do it at 75 pounds per square foot and then go to the city building department for a waiver of the minimum code requirement. And then the other letter that I provided you is from MOA Architecture. Again, I apologize for not getting this to you sooner. It wasn't until we received the final report that the board decided to abandon this project. And that was yesterday, yesterday. So I just didn't know exactly what I was going to pitch here with you today. But the results from MOA Architecture say, they, they do point out some important things like the numbers of parking spaces. But key to me, and I think key to the board in this report, is that they anticipate, they project renovation expenses or the renovation cost for floors one through floor, one through four, not the entire building, between 35 and 40 million dollars. So a renovation project of between 35 and 40 million dollars. The, the pessimistic side of me says, well, then it's probably going to be at least 45. And then the purchase price of the building to begin with. And then we are right back in the neighborhood of the request we came to you last October, I think it was, when we were looking at a grant and a new construction. The, the cost of this alone, and that doesn't include changing the exterior facade to make it uniquely a library and not look like a bank and all of those things, but just, just the initial costs really kind of priced it out of the ballpark for anything that we would be comfortable bringing to you as a project. So why am I bringing that to you now? If I'm saying that this is something we looked at and decided not to pursue, then why am I sitting here and even telling you about it? Because I felt like when I went and looked at this building initially, when it went on the market, and then I pitched it to my board as, I think we should pursue this, at least look at it. I feel like as a department of a county, our department head for the county library, I feel like we owe it to the citizens and to you as our elected officials to look at every option that's available. And I have heard in the past with different projects, why aren't you using a building for this department or for that department? And sometimes it's county, sometimes it's city. But I think that people are hungry for, for government and for local government especially, to use what's existing instead of walking away from a building and leaving it abandoned. And then what happens to that in downtown and all these question marks. So I felt like we owed it to our community to explore this. And to be honest, I'm just going to be real honest. When this came up, I thought, oh, my gosh, this could be the answer to all of our needs. And maybe it's going to be super cheap and, you know, maybe, I don't know. And then that just did not pan out. But it was worth exploring and I think it demonstrates to you and to this community that the library is really looking at all options available. We, we realize that we need a different space. There's a lot of things that we could be offering in a different way and more robust services in a better location. That's not aging and all of the things that we've talked about in the past. But this is not the answer. The board realizes this building is not the answer. And I wanted to bring to you that we've done the initial phase of due diligence and are not planning to move forward with this property. Is there anything like you, you'd like to add to that?
I, I would just say that the board was active in this process all the way through and I was especially and we looked to experts rather than try to guess on our own. And had John Griffith help us advise us as well. And, and he was able to bring in Mr. Lower and MOA virtually no cost to us and get some preliminary. That was, that was our goal as a board was to at least look. Because otherwise to just say, oh, no, I don't like that. Or yeah, we, let's jump in. It's not prudent, I didn't think. And so we pursued it with one step at a time. Due diligence on this item and then that item and try to find the critical path. And what we found was a dead end. So I think that Lisa did exactly what she was supposed to do and was, was trying to work through a lot of problems. We have a building as you're aware that has a lot of problems. So I'll leave it at that. But I just wanted you to know that the board as a whole and myself as president, we were active in this. It wasn't just the staff just working on their own.
Great. Well, we appreciate the report. And Commissioner Laird, did you have?
I'm really happy about this, the statistics you put together. I would really like to see those plastered all over town because I think that will answer a lot of the public, what kind of questions they ask me, why we need a new library and that kind of thing. And the thing that, for me, that I, I just never thought about until I went, was at a meeting one day and you brought up the weight of these books. It just didn't dawn on me that you're, you know, you set books in a floor and not put them in the bookcase and you're good to go. And you're not good to go. I found that out when I boxed up some of my books and put them in these plastic bins and then find that I gotta get a buddy to help me carry them out to the car.
They get heavy, really.
So I, I really appreciate you and your efforts to educate the community because I think you're doing a really good job with that. I kind of hoped a little bit that maybe the bank would work. But I believe every word that you've presented and I really appreciate the diligence you've gone into with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner North.
I appreciate, I mean, you looking into that and getting the information on that, on that building because all buildings are not created equally.
No, they are not.
And that's something that most people don't understand. And it all depends on how they're built and what you can do and what you can't do with them. So I just want to say that I do appreciate you looking into that before coming to us and saying, let's, let's do this. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you so much. And you know, to that point, all buildings are not created equally, right? Or built the same. Bank buildings are often the easiest buildings to renovate or retrofit into a library because they're built with solid construction. I guess second on that list from my understanding from talking to some architects is schools are also built with higher design of live loads. This one just because of the age, perhaps, I don't know. But the live load is 100 and it's just not going to, it's not going to work. We could have maybe made it work, but not for that price tag.
Thank you. Commissioner Mellon.
I'd like to also thank you, Lisa, and the board for your diligence on looking around and seeing if you can't reuse a property or not. And you brought it up. Are there any schools out there? We've got a ton of them out there that are not being used.
So, you know, we also have to look at the footprint and the location. So there are a lot of studies that say a public library in the downtown quarter actually is really good for downtown businesses. Libraries are a destination. And when you start moving outside of that quarter, then you have a negative impact on your downtown development authority and downtown businesses. So we haven't looked outside the quarter of downtown proper. But I don't know that we have schools that are shuttered that have the footprints.
Needed that are closed.
Right, yes.
And then 3,716 people. No wonder it takes me two weeks to get a book.
I know, right? We try. Do you typically do print books or digital content?
No, all audio, digital.
Audio, digital, yeah. So we are working with, so Natrona County Library is actually lead on the consortium of the statewide consortia. And Kate Much, who as you know, is the Assistant Library Director, is in charge of that. And she's been really working hard to educate library directors and library staff across the state about the need to look at the holds ratios. And as they are investing their dollars, looking to make sure that the books that we know people are waiting for, we try to purchase those. We're also encouraging different libraries across the state to invest more in their digital collection. Because as I said, you know, the, what is it? One out of, one out of every four? One out of every four items is a digital item. I don't have my glasses on. Get like this. And that's just counting like the digital books and stuff. And of course, now we know that platform also has Canopy, which is digital movies and educational, like the great courses that people often would, would subscribe to.
Can't watch a movie while I'm driving down the road.
No, you cannot. No, you cannot. But if you're at home, you could.
Yeah.
Yeah. So but this is really just.
Really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you. You know, if, if you wouldn't have done this, then people would say, why didn't you? I know that you're, you and your board and your foundation are very passionate about a new library. I, I think that at least a majority of this commission, maybe all of us believe you, you need a new building. That the building from, you know, what, the 30s, 40s, 50s, whatever it is, is not sufficient for what libraries need to be now and for the next 30 years. So thanks for being open-minded and I trust that you and your board will continue to be open-minded and pursue other opportunities, whether they're existing structures or, or pieces of dirt. But yeah, let us know if you, you know, if you want to talk about other, other projects. So thank you very much.
Very good. And you can expect, we're, we're doing a press release on the fact that we explored this and why it's not going to work just to inform the community to Commissioner Laird's point of we need to make sure that we educate the community. So this is a press release that should be going out probably right now. Megan's got it ready to go. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
We're going to take just a quick break, a couple of minutes. We're gonna take just a quick break, a couple minutes. All right, let's get going again. Our next item is our Coroner Jim Whips and Lita, Deputy County Attorney. The purpose is indigent bodies policy. You guys ready?
Yep.
Go ahead.
A long time no see, Commissioners Chairman. I'm just gonna give you an update of where we're at. This, this resolution obviously needs to be signed because I'm already doing it. Yeah. So since our last meeting, where I told you I probably had 22 sets of cremains out there, turns out I had 35. It's where I'm sitting now with two more coming. Now, what I have done is I've released 10 back to family. I have five being shipped to families across the country. 10 of them are still working on locating family again and speaking with them. And 10 that are definitely going to the common plot or whatever that looks like is columbarium or something like that. So out of that 35, we've got 10 definitely will be moving across and we're still working on the rest, so.
Well, thanks very much for getting on this and moving efficiently to do the right thing for the county. Thanks, Joe.
And we are working on the MOU between the Board of Commissioners and the Coroner's Office. We will ask Michelle to get on the agenda for the next meeting. And after that's signed, then we will begin working on the rules and regulations slash policies and procedures. But does anybody have any questions regarding the draft resolution we submitted?
Did you see my, and you may have responded right around a little before lunchtime, I think I sent something that there was maybe one last edit, the "to do so" might be redundant. So it would read unless the administrative costs go above and beyond the standard costs or goes. I guess it would be go.
Are you on paragraph 1, 2, 3?
I'm talking about the now, therefore.
Oh, down there. Okay.
If you read the highlighted language.
Yes.
I think we need to delete the words "to do so."
Those are deleted, sir. You must not have the most recent copy. I'm sorry. You had so many changes, I just couldn't keep up.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's okay. I was just, and so I will give this to Michelle so that this is the one that gets signed, the correct one. Sorry. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns on that resolution?
I read it and I agreed with your verbiage and I knew she had changed it.
Okay. Thanks. I know Michelle had it in front of me somewhere. I just wasn't looking at the right one. Okay, so we're good on that. What do you want to talk about next?
I don't.
This is much shorter than we anticipated, but we didn't get as far as we anticipated either.
Yeah.
Is our coroner growing a beard?
That I don't know, sir.
I'm trying to be with the times and keep it short, just kinda showing there. No, but I did drop an MOU and that's, that's going through Lita and Legal right now. And of course, we can change that as we figure different things. But I think it'll prepare us for the new fiscal year and, and kind of defining responsibilities as to what I'm gonna do and not do, so.
Good. And you'll kind of cross check the MOU as that comes into final form with, with your policies and procedures manual. And Lita, I don't know if we have any existing policies and procedures that might overlap in some degree, just to make sure that everything melds together well.
My policy and procedure manual will change as a working document as we go forward and solidify this stuff. I'll make my stuff match whatever we got going on, so.
Okay. Commissioner Freel, you're looking at me and your light's on, so go ahead.
Well, I was just waiting for you to be ready.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to update you that I don't really have an update right now from the city, but we are still moving forward on trying to figure out a piece of land over there. I've received one bid back, which was from the highest person, and I'm still waiting for the other two to come back in. So it's a work in progress, but hopefully by next meeting, I'll be able to have some solid numbers and be able to tell you where and how much land we'll have.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Laird brought a, an idea that we have some sort of memorial statement. And I think his idea was that it would be separate from the columbarium. I'm not sure if, if that's where you were at, but I, that was the picture that you showed us. Do we, if, if we're gonna do that, we ought to make a decision to do that. But do we need to gather information on cost or design? Or is, is it, is it not the time to do that? Do we get the columbarium first and then come back later with something that can, can match it to some degree? What are your, what are your thoughts?
Yes, yes, I agree with what you said, Mr. Chairman. I, I do think that we, seems to me that, you know, there's a couple places that, that do headstones. This is basically a headstone, but it's a, as I, as I read it to people, the wording really is coming from all of the people of this county. And I think we do need to do that. And I don't even know what a headstone costs anymore these days. Like everything else has gone up. But we need to probably get a price on it. And they could certainly look at the picture and get an idea of what we're talking about with respect to that. And I think it's an important addition to our county to do this.
Commissioner Laird, what is your thinking on why we would have it be separate than either an engraving or a plaque on the columbarium?
Well, I'm not sure that that would be necessary, Mr. Chairman. I, I envisioned if we're gonna have a burial ground, that, that it would be perhaps in the entry of the burial ground. And I can't remember now, a couple of the entrances up at Highland Park. But they do have one of those up there. They call, I never can say it right, the column where you put the ashes in. They have one inside the gates. But this would be more like a statement of the county, of the people of the county, that would be out, maybe outside of the gate or outside of the actual area. If you go, if this is, if this is our property here, and you have a road that goes in where you're having a burial ground, you would have this. I'm envisioning something about maybe five feet tall. And just like the picture I showed you, it just impressed me that a county hadn't done that. And that was the entry into the, into the area where these people are buried.
Commissioner Freel, do you know the approximate dimensions of one of these columbariums and/or the plots that, that we're talking about? I'm just trying to get right in my mind if we're talking about something that's, you know, the, the normal plots out there, I don't think are that big.
No, I think it's a normal sized plot. So if I remember right, those are about two foot wide, six foot long. And then if you're going four columbarium, or four niches high, you're gonna be four foot high. So they're about a foot by a foot on each side. But on the end, I mean, two foot, you can still get a decent plaque on the end of which, that's what I kind of thought we were going for, was put a plaque on the end of the columbarium and then have whatever saying Commissioner Laird had come up with, put that on the end of the columbarium.
Right. Instead of wanting columbarium.
This would be separate from the columbarium.
But on the end of the columbariums, they're just, it's a flat wall, just like the bottom, the top, and the sides are flat. The niches are on each side and they're a foot by a foot. So on either end of that, you have two foot by four foot that you could put a plaque just like that.
Could you get us a picture?
Onto there.
I can't get a visual of it.
You pretty much have one right there. That's what that thing's hanging out the end of looks like a columbarium.
Yeah, to me, that just looked like a headstone, basically, but.
It's just a flat piece of granite that they would put a, put a plaque on.
It's, it's just like a headstone that's carved in there.
But I think, I think what.
But I've seen the columbariums too, the one that's out at our current, where some veterans are buried. When you come in on that entrance over off 12th Street, there's one inside there. But they also have Highland Park and all that stuff there.
But I think what Commissioner Freel is saying is there's an entire face on this rectangular box.
Yeah, I hear that. I just, I need to see a picture of it.
That we could do whatever we wanted to do, whatever dedication statement.
It would be a lot, Mr. Chairman, it just seems there'd be a lot less cost going into you. You'd still take care of what you're trying to do, but you're simply building a plaque and putting it on the end of it. And again, you've got roughly eight square feet to work with to, to put that plaque on there. So it'd be a decent amount of space.
How do you spell columbarium?
C-O-L.
C-O-L-U-M-B-A-R-I-M.
All right. Do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns for the coroner? He may have other things to do.
Yeah, if I keep coming here this, this often, I might as well run for Commissioner in thinking. Yeah, it doesn't pay nearly as well.
Yeah, you're right.
But the intangible benefits never stop giving. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you much. And we'll be in touch, see you next meeting.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hagler's here early, which is great. So we can present early if that's what you all want to do.
Why don't you give me just a minute? All right. I think, I think we're ready to move forward. Mr. Hagler, welcome. And thanks also for attending the little session earlier in regard to the Platte River Trails overpass. I think there'll be some conversations that we will want you to be involved in before June 1st or whenever if, you know, once this, assuming the statement of intent or expression of interest goes in, then before the actual application goes in, I think we're gonna want some info from you. So thanks. I'm glad you were here today.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we presented a memo and a, a lease for, between Neutrona County and the Shower Ranches. And we had been asked to reword paragraph 16 regarding indemnification. And we did do that. Or excuse me, paragraph 18, sovereign immunity. There was talk about the indemnification as well. And what I did is I went in and put the language of the Woming Governmental Claims Act and the statute and the limits for the first couple sentences. And we left the remaining the same.
So Commissioners, we will note that Shower Ranch has signed this version. So I'm hopeful that we are, yeah, let me see it, now pacified or satisfied. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns with respect to sovereign immunity or Governmental Claims Act? Thank you for making the changes and getting the Shower Ranches' approval and signature.
Great. Thank you so much. Do you have anything else?
Commissioner Laird, just specifically, I'll ask you, are you looking?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to read it, but.
Here, here you go. It's right here. I got it for you.
Mr. Chairman.
As our county attorneys say, they think that this does it for us.
Well, let's, let's.
Let me read it.
Wait a minute. Yeah, you read it. Commissioner Millen.
Thank you. And they were satisfied with all the stipulations with Bates Creek? There wasn't, they didn't have any concerns about anything on that or anything? There wasn't, they didn't have any concerns about anything on that or anything? With the Bates Creek stipulations, with the BLM stipulations that are referenced, that you're using? Okay, cool.
That was pretty good, who dreamed up this language?
I did.
Pretty good, pretty good.
It wasn't really dreamed up, I just looked at the statute and then maybe made it fit and didn't plagiarize.
Well, I think much of the law is plagiarized, if you wanna use the term. It's just good laws used by everybody and it's usually worded the same way. So, yeah, I think that's fairly clear. Would I like to see a, a, a sentence that said that no indemnity should exceed what is provided in the Wyoming Court Claims Act or as applies to county governments? I would like to see maybe that sentence, that, cause it uses the word indemnity.
Okay, and.
Just to add that on the end of your paragraph.
And we have paragraph 16 as well.
Just 16, let me read 16.
And I did confirm with Mr. Hagler that neither of us believe he, he would sign another one. I think he's ready to get going, he's satisfied with this, I'm just letting you all know.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
Mike, I, both ya. But Mike, thank you for all the work you've done on this. This has been a long time coming, a long road. Yeah, so, but thank you for everything you've done on this.
Got a long ways to go.
Did you read 16, Mr. Chairman?
I did, I think we're good to go. I, I think that the, the language is satisfactory to me. I think that it's satisfactory in terms of protecting the county's interests. So I, I, I think, I'm, I'm, I would vote for it tonight in, in its current form.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that willful negligence is really a issue in Wyoming, I think it's negligence is, can be accidental. Willful is a, is a crime that would, is something that would involve punitive damage flavor to it. I've always liked to say everybody's liable for their own negligence, period. Because willful means that you intentionally went out and ran over a guy. As opposed to you were drunk and you thought you were going home and you didn't see him and ran over him. So I think we, I, I just would rather see that, I would just rather take the word willful out and say negligence. Willful fault, it's just not a term that I would ever use. It's either negligence or it's willful and wanton misconduct. And we certainly don't want to indemnify anybody for their wrongdoing, whether it's negligent or willful.
And I think I mentioned this last time, Mr. Shower and along with, I don't know how many percentages of contracts we draft, they will not sign it, will not enter into it unless there's some sort of indemnification clause.
Well, and I think that's reasonable, but that's for our own negligence. I mean, if he, if, if he gets, you know, if some employee takes his truck and comes around the corner and runs over one of our employees, do we indemnify him for that? Is that his intent?
I'm not sure. I don't, Chairman, Commissioner Laird, we're only agreeing to indemnify the ranch for our conduct and our operations.
Yeah, that's, that's, right, that's my theory. So, but when she, she puts it, she, she limits it when she says willful negligence or willful fault. There, there is no such thing as willful negligence, first of all, in my opinion. It's either negligence or willful and wanton misconduct. So if, if she said, uh, I mean, if we, if, if it applies to us, so then, yeah, if one of our employees gets drunk and decides to run down one of his hands and runs over him, that's willful and wanton misconduct. And we'd be liable anyway. But it, it's what I, what I'm worried about is if his hand is crazy and drunk and runs over one of our employees, we're not, we, we certainly, I don't think anybody would think we'd indemnify for that issue. Or if he's coming around the corner in his truck and, and runs over somebody accidentally, are we, do you believe that we're indemnifying him for that? I don't believe that, that we're indemnifying anybody for their own negligence or misconduct. I don't see how we can do it. This, it would be, it would be clear to me if it just said that we indemnify him for any wrongdoing or misconduct of any of our employees or our, so he doesn't have to worry that we, one of our trucks would run over somebody, we would have to pay for it, he would be indemnified if they sued him. I can get that. But I think this is not quite, I, I think this, we could be worked over by a couple of lawyers I know with this kind of language and get outside the scope, maybe even outside the scope of our, our, our immunity.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, we do specifically retain our, our immunity within the contract. I, I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time coming up with a scenario where we would be found to have waived it.
It's saying, but you're saying that the only thing that we're not indemnifying from him is willful negligence or willful fault. I would like to say that we're not indemnifying him for any wrongdoing he does. We're indemnifying him for our wrongdoing, if he should be sued, because that does happen. Where we could run over somebody and lawyers sue the county and him, trying to get to his policy. And I can see where he would wanna be indemnified by us. But we're also then saying, yes, we indemnify you, but only up to the amount of our immunity. You see what I'm saying? So if he had a million dollar policy, we indemnify up to $250,000, that's all we can do under the law. So I didn't mean to cause you guys any heartburn here. It's just that these kind of things, if you see some of the case law and some of the stuff where these indemnities, you thought you were good and all of a sudden your whole company's at issue here because you didn't understand indemnity law and negligence. So I would just like to see that say, indemnifying him for any, any negligence that we may cause. And, but we certainly aren't, can't indemnify him for negligent he causes. I don't think anybody asked for that, I mean, it's like, well, for the county, say you, you go out at lunch and run over somebody. And you're not in the course and scope of your employment, I don't wanna be indemnifying you for that. But if you're in the course and scope of your employment, then we have to. But then, then you're immune and the county's immune up to $250,000 or over $250,000.
Commissioner.
That's my thoughts.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Freel.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, you know, obviously our legal team has looked into this and, and they've rendered their opinion, they're comfortable with this document. It's been signed and they've already said that he's not gonna re-sign it again. So I just think we're, we are at a mute point at this juncture, I think we should move forward with this.
Thank you, my, my perspective is that this is a negotiated contract. And I've negotiated a million of these on behalf of the landowner, the developer, the contractor. And, and this is where we're at. We have, I think, clearly, the statutory protections in this agreement that we need, that would be deal breakers for us. So whether the word willful should be in there or not, I think it's negotiated that it's in there. And that is just an exception to our indemnification. And so maybe it's not quite as broad of an exception as we would want, but that to me is still acceptable, given what I perceive as nominal risk and robust protections under the law. So I think this is where we're at. And I think that the county is best served by entering into this agreement moving forward with the, with the family, the Shower Ranch for, for this gravel deal. Commissioner North.
I agree with all that. I mean, basically, we're at the point where if they're not gonna sign it again, we need this gravel. We've negotiated it, this is what we have, and they've signed it. So I think, I think it's time to move forward. And, you know, we can always use this for a learning experience in the future. But as of right now, for this agreement, I think this is where we need to be.
Commissioner Laird, your light's still on, but are you?
No, I, I, I just try to be overly concerned with a couple of these provisions is all. And so I think you guys have done a good job on it and I hope that it covers this in the event there's some, something weird happens.
Very good. So I think we'll be moving forward tonight with this in its present form. And then, Mr. Hagler, you can proceed, we'll hope for the best on the numbers.
Will do.
Thank you, thank you.
One other question, Mr. Chairman, and this doesn't bother you, Mr. Hagler. I didn't notice in here, if you don't, if you don't make the date that you have in the contract for reclamation, is there something that could extend that for us? Cause that does happen occasionally.
I mean, we have a general provisions clause, I believe, regarding modifications to the lease. I, I can't really speak about the timing for the reclamation. Mr. Hagler might be able to better. Oh, sorry.
It, it's said in here that we have to have the reclamation done by such and such a date. What happens if during the course of human events, you don't get it done by that date? In your mind, Mr. Hagler?
Well, there's a clause in there also that we end up starting to pay if we don't get it done. To protect him from us dragging our feet or walking away for a year and not doing anything.
Right.
Which I kinda agree with, I think we oughta get done, we wanna get out of there. He wants us out of there, he just doesn't want, see it be a six, seven, eight, nine year project because we didn't get it done.
Yeah.
Or we didn't bid it out again or whatever. And, you know, then, then he just wants the reclamation done. So if we had one reservoir built after the other one, we were gonna pull out of there, then we'd have to reclaim. And that would be done as part of the bid process. When we let the bid, whoever's in there would have to reclaim that.
It says all reclamation must be completed by December 31st, 2029, and fee obligations of county to Shower Ranch as described in section five shall continue until all reclamation is complete. So I see that, we, we keep paying him until we get a reclaim.
It's an incentive for us to get done.
I'm just nervous about gravel pits right now, Mr. Chairman, law that applies.
Yeah, and there's a force majeure clause in the event of acts of God, whether delays, things like that. So anyway, thanks for the discussion, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
We are ahead of schedule, so that's great. Heather, do you have a legal update or do you need a little time? What do you, what do you wanna do?
I don't have a whole lot, so if you'd like to go forward, we, we sure can.
Great.
That's fine with me. Just looking at the agenda this evening, so we've already discussed the Shower Ranch agreement, the additional items we have on there that, that I was involved with would include the grant award agreement, that's for Roden Bridge disaster grant, that, that's on there for approval this evening. And then the contract with Dave Loadon Construction for the roof project for the detention center. Asking that that be approved tonight, he's ready to go as soon as possible. So as soon as the contract's approved, he'll order materials, if he hasn't already, and, and get started on the, on the roof project.
Heather, let me add a little bit more to that, they're, they're actually looking at April 19th of starting that and setting the units on the roof at the same time and working together. So they should be done by mid-May. And so they're, they're moving forward pretty quick on this stuff and trying to get everything done on, on that.
So that is good news, I'd say. And then outside of the agenda for this evening, as far as updates on, on other things go, the, the purchase of the property on B Street is going forward, I think without any issues. We're set to close on April 15th and as far as I can tell, that should still happen at that time. Let's see here. Oh, there, there was a request we received from the fire district with respect to some impact assistance funds for, let me look at what he requested here. Lithium battery, a power supply, and then an automated chest compression system. So I was asked to check to see what we had been awarded funds for. Generally, within the order of the Industrial Siding Council, it was for fire suppression equipment and a truck. I was able to get more information based on our submission that we made to the Industrial Siding Council, and that included, that did include a fire truck. It included some encapsulator type containers, there were several of those, different sizes. I think some fire suppressant foam. I was, I, I have not been able to, to track down the exact items that he is requesting within our submission, but it is at least related, I guess. So I don't know if you have any questions about.
I appreciate you looking into that.
Commissioner Mill.
Heather, we, when we talked, there was a question also about disbursement of funds and all that, can you run through that?
Jim, I think I wanna hear this, as, you know, not like usual, but, but what were you, what was your question?
It was to her, not you.
Well, I wanna hear it, cause I might have the same question.
Basically, me and, I spoke to Heather, I don't know, it was quite a while ago. And we talked about the scheduling of, of the, the distribution of funds from the two different projects that are in line, this final Cedar Springs and then the, the Dorant Dynasil or Anticline, whatever it is now. And when those are coming due, or if they were, or how that rolls out so that when we get requests by departments or divisions or special districts like this, that we know whether we have the money that was intended to be used for that or if, if we're just asking to ask and hopefully we get the money later on down the road to cover that.
So what, what I could say about that, I'm trying to pull up an email from Mr. Doyle, I don't think I can get to it. I think the first amount of the Dynasolar Impact Assistance Funds have, have come in. I don't know if it's the first month potentially or a little bit more than that. So we have, we have started to receive funds for that project. For Anticline and Cedar Spring, that, that has not started yet, although I understand that, I think Anticline is in, in the process of potentially securing permits, so that could start pretty soon. But so far, we're only receiving the, the Dynasolar funds. And we've only received a portion of, of that, maybe the first month, possibly the first two months of. of those funds. Does that help answer your question?
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman. I would ask that if Heather could share what she found with me, because obviously I'm the one that works with the budget and does the expenditures, and also Michelle and I worked on some Cedar Springs reporting last year. We worked on that quite a bit. So if Heather could share that with me, that'd be great. And then I can, you know, work on keeping track of that as well as as part of the budget process, if you wish.
Yes, please. Commissioner North.
Well, I just got a text from Brian asking about that specific thing that we're just talking about, so. I guess I guess we just need to kind of figure out where we're at on that. I don't remember. I mean, that was longer enough ago that well, that was before my time on the the commission on the Dynasolar, so I don't know what was what went through there. Because that was four years ago, I think, at least at least four years ago, maybe five. So I'm not sure exactly what those agreements were, but I guess that's something we need to look back into and see, because I know there's a lot of a lot of our municipalities are waiting for that money to come in. There's a lot of our different districts that are waiting for that to come in to purchase stuff, so. And Anticline is the permits are being applied for now, so they should be starting work on that fairly soon, and hopefully that that funding will start rolling in too.
Thank you. Yeah, so so look into it and give us a report. I do think it's important to track these things. So, Madam Clerk, thanks for your continued assistance on that, you know. To Commissioner North's point, some of these things were went to the Industrial Siding Council and, you know, were decided and you know, departments submitted their requests years ago before I think most of us were were on the board. And so one thing that is interesting to me is when we when can we deviate from the original request if they ask for this kind of truck, and it's really that kind of truck, but it's pretty much the same truck? Well, okay, maybe that's not a big deal. But if it's a truck and now it's, you know, a city park, maybe it's a bigger deal. I think it's going to be a gray area, though, and and what is still consistent and within the parameters for us to exercise our discretion. And then if we do say yes, that we're not asked two years later for the original truck, because we already did the similar truck. And so we've just got to make sure we keep track.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
Do you think kind of a spreadsheet or a report similar to what we do with our one cent for the years out and down, would that would that that would work, wouldn't it, for this these different, you know, this siding council, that siding council? And then we have everything figured out who gets what, when, where, whatever.
Yeah, I I think that's a great idea. I mean, I wasn't included in any of the conversations when these submissions were provided or given or submitted or whatever. So I think as the chief budget officer, I do need to be involved in in keep track of the expenditures and obviously work with the treasurer's office as far as revenue coming in and balance that or, you know, keep track of that. I I think that is would be my responsibility to do that.
Yeah. Because it seems to work out really well for one sense, so you know, if we can separate the projects and have everything filed and, yeah.
Commissioner Laird.
I had a question from the sheriff in a meeting the other day. He wondered what was happening to the money we got or are going to get, or what whatever stage we're in from the lawsuit concerning the the drugs. And I know you were working on that at one time, Commissioner Freo. So have we received any money yet?
Mr. Chairman, I I believe we have received money. I don't know what the amounts are, but we have originally. So I've been on both sides of this conversation, but originally the city and the county did talk about combining that money. And I thought they their talk was to go to some sort of a treatment facility itself, as far as like detox center. But I don't know where that's gone.
So how much money is involved, you know?
It was quite a bit per year.
So, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I did the reporting for the opioid funds for last year, and it was just over $600,000. And we are continuing to receive money in. None of the money's been expended. There was discussion about an MOU with the city between the city and the county to fund an opioid treatment program. And I reviewed a draft MOU from the city that that looked fine. However, that I haven't heard anything more about that, so.
But we haven't voted on anything, have we?
No, nope.
Does that take a whole vote of the commission to deal with that?
Certainly, yeah. It's just a preliminary stage, looking at, you know, a draft and
Yeah, I don't know what the sheriff had in mind, but he asked about that, and I didn't know the answer to it, so I'll be able to tell him. And so how much total do you think is in?
I just know what we received last year for the reporting, and it was just over $600,000.
Do we have any idea what our total will end up being?
I could probably find out for you. I don't have it with me right now.
Thank you.
Heather, I don't know if you're familiar with the Casper Mountain Trail Center change order requests. There were a few. There there's one on our consent agenda. There's another one that involves light fixtures. And I I don't know if we can approve that one tonight. That is, it's about $4,770. I asked Michael Brown to get some additional information from the architect and Casper Building. For example, why should we have to pay it? It was unforeseen, and I said, well, why is that? I heard back, I actually talked with the project manager Neil Brandon at Casper yesterday, and he agrees that basically nobody's at fault when they send out these packages for bidding. There's a rafter issue, and they can design the columns and the rafters 15 different ways. And the way that was designed and approved doesn't allow for, I can't remember if it's a an eight-foot fixture, so we have to basically cut back on some of those, and there's a restocking fee. I'm satisfied at this point, and based upon what Mr. Brandon was saying that and what Modern Electric was saying, that that these things need to be secured sooner rather than later, because the prices are going up, that maybe we can get that one approved tonight as well, unless the commissioners have questions, comments, or concerns. And I can pull that change order number three. If if you don't have it, I've got it in my emails.
Mr. Chairman, I have not seen, I don't recall seeing that particular one. I did see the one that's on the agenda for this evening, I believe, for the for the gas piping. So I guess, you know, we could do it two ways. We could amend the agenda to include change order three, or if the commission's okay with approving it and then ratifying it at the next meeting, we could we could do it at that time as well.
Okay. Commissioner North, did you have a question or comment on that?
Well, I do. I guess my biggest question is that since this is something that we didn't request, and it wasn't done, then I guess I have a little umbrage with paying for a change order. You know, and if we haven't ordered these yet, I don't have any problem with getting them ordered, but they knew what the design was, and I I recognize that they can change some of that stuff in their final design, but I don't understand why the county should be responsible for paying for a change order when they're the ones that knew. You know, they're the ones that put this this package together, and they knew what it was, so it's not anything that we requested to change. It's something that was just changed without our our request or anything else. So I I just have a hard time with us paying for a change order for something that wasn't our our doing or our request.
Well, it wasn't our request, certainly, and I I hear what you're saying on that. But it it was essentially caused by the package that was ordered, which was pursuant to our specs. The actual separate or the 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 distance between the rafters and the columns could be done, and this is what I was trying to say, could be done by 10 different manufacturers, 10 different ways, and still meet our architect specs. The one we got, the one that's going to be coming up the backside of Casper Mountain here fairly soon is going to require an adjustment on those fixtures. So that's why I'm satisfied at least that it's beyond that that it is unforeseen and that we can't fault either the the contractor or the architect. And it's just one of those crappy deals that somebody's got to pay for it, and it's going to be the owner. If you're not comfortable, we can have Mr. Brown spell that out in more detail, and we can do this at the next meeting.
Well, I I did talk to Michael about this this morning. That's so I I am aware of what the issue is.
Did Michael say whose fault it is? Did he pin it on someone? What's his recommendation?
I did not ask him that specifically, but if, generally speaking, though, if it doesn't necessarily have to fall on the owner, is what I'm getting at.
Who do you think it should fall on, then?
If it's a change order, then, or they haven't ordered have they ordered the the lights? Because my understanding is they have not. If they have, then.
That's why there's a restocking fee of like 40%.
And that's something that I think we ought to be able to get those lights. If that's the case, then then must take those lights and figure out where we can use them in a shop or something else. We have other options that we can look at it, because you're going from a 12 to an eight-foot light, and I know Roden Bridge is looking at a new building that we could put 12-foot lights in. Michael Brown is looking at a, you know, a potential new shop out at the lake that we could use 12-foot lights in. So we could design those with that in mind. And so I don't have any problem. If we're going to if we're going to have to pay for those lights, I just don't see any needing us paying half the price to have them restocked. Let's just keep them and and put them and put them to use somewhere else.
Sorry to have brought this up. I don't mean to waste everybody's time. Let's hold off on change order three.
Just an interesting note, Mr. Chairman, from a meeting this morning, they they were going to deliver concrete up the up at the jail for the project they're working on there with the boilers, and the concrete was going to be have to be delivered into the room by wheelbarrow. So Garrett came up with this idea of how to get it, I think, through the roof, through the way they pump it in. And so you don't have to, you don't have to hire everybody to to do the manual stuff. But the contractor raised the price when he changed the easier way to do it with less with less people working on it. So we were all a little interested there, but again, it's what happens with the county.
Heather, did you have any other legal updates?
I I don't, unless you have questions about anything that we're working on for you or anything like that.
Nothing that I need to bring up at this point. We'll just keep in touch on those things. So I believe Commissioner Roundtable is next. Commissioner Laird, even though we're ahead of schedule, let's
Have to go get my dog anyway.
Okay, well, you get to go first.
A couple of things. One is the people that are complaining about the hospital, the numbers are growing substantially due to events that have happened up there. And I I don't understand some of it. I hear it from all walks of life, doctors, regular people, people who hadn't had any bone to pick, people whose relative died there in ways that were unusual. I've also heard some good things about the hospital that have happened. And I just want to make it known that if they want to sell that hospital, I personally, I don't speak for you, gentlemen, I would I would personally encourage them to do so and release them from any contractual obligations they have if we approved the hospital they were selling it to. Our our community is has unrest concerning that that whole matter. And I it's growing larger every day, and I I certainly don't want to, you know, if people need treatment, they need to go there, but if they go there and they don't get the treatment, then that's another issue too. And so enough said on that issue. I read a editorial in the paper from one of the persons who lives on the mountain concerning the gravel pit. And she was upset about the thought of having to hire experts or anybody else. And you guys can read that for yourself, but it's 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 sad how how that is disturbing the people of our of our county that live on the face of Casper Mountain. I know I was one of the persons that, when they came in, we we see all the time people who come in here and and they've hired a lawyer to represent them, and it's helpful to the commission, I think, when people do that, or they hire an expert to come in and explain to the commission why the proposition they're proposing is a good idea. And so anytime I've suggested to somebody they hire an expert or a a lawyer, it's just, I guess, the nature of my profession, that kind of work I've done for a long time, that most people don't understand the law, especially mining laws and and the kind of the laws we all have to that we all have to live by here in this commission and enforce. We even have our own county attorney to explain it to us, which is a good thing. And so I I think too, Mr. Chairman, sometimes people don't understand what our job here is. And as I see, part of our job is, is that if if a citizen wants to do something in the community, and another citizen wants to object, sometimes for me to make the proper decision is to hear what the experts have to say. Because I don't, you know, I'm not an expert in the area of hydrology, for instance. I have I have looked into gravel mining. One of the things that I see is Coates Road is not built for 80,000-pound trucks to be going across it. So I asked the sheriff, and I've asked Mr. Hagler both, should we put a weight limit on that county road? Or maybe all county roads? And put a speed limit? Because if an 80,000 or 90,000-pound truck comes roaring down that high down that road several times a day and going 40 miles an hour or so, that that road won't last very long, and we'll be repairing it. And so I think we have to look at things like that to see what how that impacts citizens of the county. People have a right to do business also. People have a right to make a living also. And we all have to follow the law and what's right. And the more information I get from people, that's a especially that requires an expertise is helpful to me as a commissioner in making decisions. And I know that our our community is hurting right now because of certain issues that are going on in the county, and I it hurts me when I see them come in. And I, it hurts me when I see them come in here. And when I listen to them and I understand some of the problems that occur. And the truth is, I just want to do what's right. And sometimes I do have to pray about it because I, I just want to do what's right by our people. And that includes all of our people. That's, that's everybody who's involved. And cause we hear things all the time where people, some people are for it and some people are against it and we have to make a decision. And so I just need to have as much information as people want to provide, but people don't have to hire a lawyer, people don't have to hire an expert and we'll, we'll use our own county attorney and our own guy that knows about roads and bridges and stuff like that to tell us what they think and rely on. And so I always hope that these matters can be settled before they, they go to court or before they have to come before somebody has to make some decision. I just want our people to be happy in this county, period.
Commissioner North.
Commissioner Laird and I sat in um last week with a, a meeting with the Department of Revenue on ag evaluations and stuff like, you know, that are associated with that. And then we also got some additional information yesterday. I did put a, have a copy of the formula, put on every one of you guys' desks to, to try to help out a little bit on that. There's some questions that um need to ask our assessor as far as just exactly which, which process she's using before we go into a lot of this. But there are some, there are some things that can be done on a local level um that we were told as far as getting actual prices or production that way instead of uh, instead of having to rely on the, on the state's information. So that may be something that helps us if we have several appeals or I have a feeling that with the ag prices, if they, if they do go up as much as they're predicting they will this year, that that's something that's, that may help us out as far as some of our, looking at our data and, and making sure that we're, we've got everything coordinated as far as just exactly who's, who's being assessed correctly or not, so.
Can I ask you a follow up on that real quick?
Sure.
Would you draft an email to Tammy, um our assessor, um the questions you had on what process and procedure methods, uh your, your question for her on which one she's using or ones? And then um maybe make some recommendations or ask questions on um some of those things you think can be done at the local level for prices and production. Um and if you copy the rest of the commissioners, then we'll be in the loop. I, I think time is really of the essence here and I, I think it should be in an email just so that everybody is clear um what we're asking for and, and what her response is.
Well, one of the things the state does is they rely on a process called NAS and basically they call, call producers and many of us hang up on those kind of phone calls when you get it because it's like it's nobody's business how much I produced or what I made off stuff. Well, unfortunately, that comes around and bites us because um either you have guys that are very happy about how much they produce and sometimes they embellish a little more than they should. So that as a result of that, we all pay higher taxes because our land doesn't produce as much as it was that we, that they have on record is it doing. Same thing goes with uh livestock sales and some other stuff. And I know that's, that's one of the things that there's some local information that we can get, but I will be, I'll be happy to put some stuff together and, and send out an email to everybody so that you're aware of kind of where we're going with that, but there's some.
No, I don't, I don't need that. I just for clarification, I think if you send Tammy the questions and, and the requests, then she'll have an understanding, can respond back to us what she's actually doing and then we'll just be in the loop.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's where I was going with that, so.
Okay, can I add something to that for clarification? Cause I was at these meetings and I know that this ag business is important and it's going to be a twenty-two percent increase, but there's a range, Mr. Chairman, that we've seen that, that the Board of Revenue has told her to follow. And this range has got a high and a low to it and there's a big difference. And so the issue is where she lands, where our assessor lands within that big range and, and how that's applied. Now, the Board of Revenue guys down there, they, they uh, they start out by saying, well, you gotta follow the rules. So I say, well, what, you know, when somebody says that, I ask them, what rules are you talking about? And they came up with some statute, which is, yeah, that's what we should pay attention to, but the information they use dates back to twenty seventeen. And it goes to twenty twenty-two and it doesn't tell you the current interest rates, which ag appraisals are based on, current interest rates and sales. And then saying to us in this meeting that they couldn't get the updated information for some reason, and I don't recall exactly the reason, but it, they, you know, they're good guys. I, I believe that they couldn't, except this other person did find the, the information. And what they did say was is that it, they'll, that ag will probably go down three percent and next year because of interest rates and sales. So the thing was very confusing because how, why not apply it in twenty twenty-three is my issue. And, and uh twenty twenty-four, because we do know what the interest rates are and you can go to a source and find out the average sales for, for uh wheat and, and uh alfalfa and everything else and what, what these people in Wyoming are planning. But you, 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 some guys are being assessed on ground that, that, that they don't replant and it doesn't produce. Maybe produces thirty percent of what it used to produce, but they're being assessed on, producing a hundred percent like the guy next door who, who's been, who re, who replants every year. And so the whole thing just sounded strange to me as a guy who hasn't been in that business. You, on the other hand, have, have been in that business and, and perhaps Mr. Mill. And so when I heard all of that, I'm thinking, I'm thinking there's, there's something being lost here in the translation, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, I, I.
There you go.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys attending that and I would have attended it um if, if we could have had more than two um without calling a, a special meeting, but I know that the, the D O R said this is the time and the place and, and so that's, that's that. But I, what I, what I'm trying to get across is the time is of the essence and we need to do our darndest and the taxpayers deserve it for us to in, almost investigate this whole theory as it relates to not just ag, that's what we're talking about now, but property taxes in general. And I uh get a little worked up when I see things like uh numbers from twenty seventeen and I hear things from you that we're not looking at twenty twenty-three, even though they've got the data. Uh and, and that's why I think that a written record in the form of some emails will then help us narrow and refine the issue. So then if we want to hire an expert, uh or if we want to go out and get some information in the market, then we can be targeted and efficient and because the clock is ticking and we're gonna have uh CBOE appeals sooner than we know it. And so I, I think that uh time is short and, and I, I don't want kind of the, there, there's a phrase for it that I'm not going to use, but, but kind of the back and forth with um, you know, people pointing fingers, especially, you know, fingers up to the uh the, the Department of Revenue. So, so let's, let's all pitch in on this and then see where maybe we can head with it in the next meeting or so.
Well, I will say one thing to you, Mr. Chairman, the person we talked to yesterday who knows a lot about this says time is of the essence, just like you did, because these notices are coming out. And I, I guarantee you that people are going to be uh not happy at all.
I agree. Uh Commissioner Mill.
Question for uh Commissioner North. And kind of goes to what Commissioner Laird was saying. So I fill out at USDA surveys by law all the time for my pro, for my production. Is there a reason? Did they give a, a reason that the state of Wyoming isn't able to use that data? Or was that question not asked or what?
That, that quite, I didn't ask that question because I have to do the same thing. I get that. I get those same things every year. You know, what's your, what are you growing? You know, how much did you produce? Is it irrigated? Is it not irrigated and everything else? So I know what you're talking about there. I don't know if the state of Wyoming, that's a good question. I don't know if the state of Wyoming is actually utilizing that information. And that's, that's, that's a good question to ask.
I got the impression, Commissioner Mill, that they didn't use that.
Right. And that's what I'm saying is why not?
But. Well, because it's not some published thing that's called the, I forget the name of some national organization. I'm just trying to answer the question.
But more further to my point though, is it's kind of sad that a ag, not as much ag anymore, but still in an ag state like Wyoming, you can't go to the UW and have a resource for ag like you can with uh Nebraska. If I'm interested in leases or property costs or this or that or whatever, I go to Nebraska, University of Nebraska's site for all of my information because Wyoming doesn't have anything.
Yeah, no, I.
And that's kind of a comment for you.
I, yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. I mean, I think for those of us who were involved in ag, I think that's something that's very frustrating because going through how they're actually coming up with these numbers and a lot of the stuff. And one of the things that I brought up specifically was, and you guys know this, is your soil types. They analyze what your production, what your maximum production is, not what your actual production, but what your maximum production is from your soil types and whether it's irrigated or not. Well, you guys know as well as I do that your maximum production changes all the time because it's, it's weather dependent, it's soil dependent. Do you go out there and you, or if you put fertilizer on it or if you, you know, you don't and the cost associated with that and everything else? So there's, you guys know, there's a lot of factors.
The second part of that question though, too, um for your discussion with those guys was did, it, it's still in, in the assessor's ball court though of the process and how she comes up with that, as long as it's uniform.
A lot of it is, yes, a lot of it is. And that's one thing Tammy has told me that she uses the lowest values, um which is, which is good, but there's, there's still some other questions because um I mean, you can have two different types of soil types in fields right next to each other and, you know, and that happens all the time. So there, there are a lot of things that I, I would like to get more answers about. I just, at this point in time is still kind of, I'm still trying to figure out what the questions are that I need to ask, you know, to get, to get informed on this stuff. And I'm not trying to dodge a question or anything like that. I just, they're just, you guys know how it is. There's a lot of this stuff that's, that's complicated and there's a lot more to it than most of us realized.
Mr. Chairman, let me add one thing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Commissioner North, um you know, because I think time is of the essence, if, even if you just circulate some draft questions to us copying legal, then we can kind of, you know, mold them or pitch in or, or, or do whatever to them, you know, if that's, that's going to be a little easier, but I, I do think we need to get going on it and if you can take the first step, I think that'll be helpful.
Well, I, and I'm not saying I'm not gonna do that. I was just trying to explain some of the other stuff that was associated with that. I, I will do that. I'll, I'll sit down and, and work through some of this stuff and I'll send Tammy some questions and I'll um ask you guys, you know, copy you guys on, on all of it because um it is, it's something that we need to, to find out the answers on a lot of this stuff because there's going to be a lot of questions this year.
Commissioner Laird.
Two things, uh Chair, Commissioner Mill, one of the things they said, that at least the interpretation I got from it not being a farmer and a rancher, was down along the lines of what you've been saying, but they don't, they don't accept, like if you've, if you file a report and say gave your numbers, they don't use those. It's just like the guy who's, who doesn't like the assessment on his house and he comes in and his realtor is giving him an appraisal. They don't use that. They won't look at it e- even if it's accurate because it's a mass appraisal type of system. And I think they didn't use that term, but that's what they're doing here because they go outside and they get these, these numbers back from some national organization that this guy is telling me isn't available right now. And then this other person said they found them. This is where they went to find these numbers. But the big, biggest question that we have, and I think he sent you guys all this documentation, there is, there is the, the, the highs and the lows on these way they assess. Now, the question is, is where does our assessor go? That's why I wanted to just show her that graph and she'll tell me. She's, you know, she's pretty forthcoming. She doesn't have a bone to pick, but I want to see where that falls because the low is nothing I've seen here before that's there and how you get to the low. And now I think Mr. North knows a lot more about this issue of farming and ranching than I do by far, but, but I'm, I'm sitting there trying to listen to it as a guy trying to make sense of it and wondering why they don't use up to date information and why don't they take a guy? One of the analogies I use is they're assessing somebody's property on Casper Mountain where all the timber has been burned down and lain down on the ground and nothing can grow. The same amount is the guy next to him who has twenty acres of full timber. I don't get that. I did ask him that and they, well, hell, you can use this and you can use that. I said, really? And so this was the, this was the board. And so when you hear this, it's confusing. And I'm, I'm confused and I need more information and I'm trying to get more information, but you're right because, Mr. Chairman, these notices are coming out pretty shortly.
So, you know, they, it's, it's, it's really cute that they can say um essentially this is a mass appraisal system and, and the producer's numbers don't matter, so don't bring me the appra, the equivalent of a, a real estate appraisal. And then we're given this um, you know, two printouts from two sale dates, uh October eleventh and Oc, and November first from Torrington Livestock and they cut off the numbers of animals sold. And, and it's also, it also would show the producer's name on there, which, you know, could be redacted or whatever, but if you do the math and you figure out that our livestock assessments or the values are, are based on, on what I would just ballpark at a hundred animals, animals sold, uh that's not reflective, I think, of the market. It's only one market on two different days and a limited number of animals. And this is no better, I mean, I could do this in three minutes. Um I could do a lot better than that and get a couple other livestock markets and get thousands of animals and you call up Superior Livestock Auction and actually get data instead of, instead of this. I know this is only one component, but, but this is pathetic in my mind and I don't know if they talk to you guys, I don't know if they talk to you guys about that, but, but this is, uh we could blow this out of the water.
But the issue I heard was that Torrington is not necessarily the, the one that they should be using either because all the counties are different. I mean, I heard things I'd never heard before.
Well, well, Commissioner Laird, there, there, there isn't a, a livestock auction. Riverton's got one and, and Torrington. There, there aren't one, there aren't these in every county, but they have sales um every weekend and usually multiple times a week.
And that is one of the things that I did bring up is that, and you know, everybody doesn't sell their cows at the same time. And the value of the cows changes depending on, oh, I mean, a multitude of things. And so that was one of the things that I did uh ask them about and there wasn't a good answer from the Department of Revenue. And the other part is I don't understand quite how they use mass appraisal on ag land. And that's, they did bring that, they did use that, that phrase. And I questioned them about it because I questioned them about the soil types. I questioned them about the weather conditions and everything else and how you can actually do that. So um there was actually, I actually had more questions coming out of it than I did going into it on some of this stuff, so. There was actually, I actually had more questions coming out of it than I did going into it on some of this stuff. So.
Well, let's, we're going to be behind schedule here pretty quick. So Commissioner Freel, um, thanks for your patience. These, these, this ag conversation over here is over with for now. Uh, we'll pick it up again soon. But, um, Commissioner comments or roundtable, it's your, you're up.
Only a couple of things. Uh, so CNFR meeting was moved to next week. It didn't happen yesterday. Tickets did go on sale yesterday for the CNFR. I think season tickets actually went on sale yesterday. On the future agenda items, you have me down on the BOR for the lottery system. I think we've, we've exhausted that. BOR is set in their ways. Uh, the lottery system is. It, it just seems to be a crazy system. I mean, it's. You would think that random drawing on a lottery would mean that, you know, each time the trailers go up for sale out there in the trailer court itself. They go up for sale, they pull five names. And then a second one goes up, they pull five more names. Well, it turns out that. You could pull the same five names and you don't, you'd have two trailers, five people. It's not, you pull five and then the next five and then the next five. So person could get pulled multiple times. Um, so that to me is a little bit odd. And then if we pull the trailer off and then we turn around and, and give it back to, if we're going to go back to the list at the end of the season and give it to somebody. Then they don't, they don't do the lottery system. They'll draw five names and pick somebody out of that. They just go to the top of the list and pick the first person. Which you should probably do that in the first place. Um, but the BOR is like really got their heels in the sand. They have a, literally told me they have a system in place. It works. And if people figure their way around the system, then so be it. So I, I don't know what else we could do. I can tell you that the people within the, uh, trailer court out there are. They're just taking it to the next level beyond us. And so, um, I think that next level is. That, that I know that they're headed to is, uh, Barasso Loomis. To, to that group and, and try and take care, care of something that way. So I don't know that. I, I think we, where I'm going with that is I think we can take it off of future agenda list. Because I think we've pretty much exhausted anything that we can do or anything that they're going to listen to from us. So unless somebody else has got something on that.
So this morning at Department Heads Meeting, Michael mentioned, um, submitting to the BOR. Some proposed changes to it. He did indicate that those weren't going to be real significant. I asked him before he did that to send those proposed changes to the five of us. So that we'd be up to speed with, with you and him. I'm assuming you're up to speed on those. So, and I'm also assuming I'm correct in saying that they're not significant changes that. I just, so, so what do we have to do? Like, like when is the next time the BOR is going to ask us for anything out there? And, and will there be a point when we can renegotiate the terms of our management agreement? Heather, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but, um, I mean, it's this kind of lack of authority. Whether it's how many stickers you have on your dock or whether you can, you know, have this on the dock or this by your dock or this up by your, your cabin. What's, what's the timeframe and?
Well, I'm not exactly sure when we go to renegotiate again, but I can tell you, I mean, I took phone calls last week. Because they just handed out letters for the docks in particular, that people were given less saying. You can't have a weighted umbrella stand sitting on your dock because it's not bolted down to the dock. You couldn't have a dog kennel sitting on your dock because it's not bolted down. So they literally got letters of violation. To go out and remove these items off of their docks. But those type of things, I, you know, I talked to the, I talked to the entire group out there, including the guy that runs this division here. And he has basically been there for like fifty years and said that. The system is what it is and that's the way it's going to be, period, end of story. There's, there is no further discussion with them. But I honestly don't know where you go with it. I mean, it's, um. I mean, short of, and he, and he sat there and said, you know, originally. The way it was set up out there in the very beginning was that you rented a, or you leased a space. From them. And as soon as you were done, you were supposed to pull everything off of that space. And it'd be opened up, cleaned up, flat lot for somebody else to come in and lease the space back. That's what it was intended. Then over the years, they allowed them to leave their stuff there and people were selling their trailers. They put it in, you know, nineteen fifty new moon trailer out there and they turn around and sell that to the next person that came along. And so over the years, a trailer that was built nineteen fifty that's worth five hundred dollars today anywhere else. Sells for a hundred thousand dollars out there. The way they look at it is that people are upsailing their lease. They're making money off of their lease and they shouldn't be able to do it. So, um, basically said. That it could go back to the way it originally was supposed to be. And, you know, it, I kind of took it as though if that's, if people wanted to push the issue, then that's the direction they could go. They can go back out there and say, as soon as you're done with, with your lease, take your stuff and get it out of here. Leave the space clean and we'll re-lease this out to the next person. Problem with that is, I mean, it's a double edged sword. You, you fight because you can't sell, sell it to who you want to. And if you can't sell it, then you got to pull it off. But then if you push the issue with them and they made it quite clear that if you push the issue with them, then they're going to go back to the way it originally was. So if you spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to go put a trailer on a, on a, or to buy a trailer that's out there. And they decide to go back to the way it was, you just lost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You might as well just write a check to the next person walking by and give it to them because your investment's gone. I don't know the answer to it. And, you know, unfortunately, I've, I've told several people out there, I don't know the answer to it. But they're, they're gonna, and they understand it's a double edged sword, but they're taking it to the next level and. And writing a letter that I'm sure will come to us. It'll, it'll come to, uh, Michael. I'm, I'm not sure that there's anything we can do with it, but I know that it's also going to get CC to. To our, our fellow people in, uh, Washington. So, because really realistically, that's. That's the level you're deal- dealing with. You're dealing with the, the regional director of BOR here that. Says it is what it is.
Did they raise the dock fees nine hundred bucks?
You know what I hate? I hate, I hate the threats. And, and I think that if we, you know, if, if we're talking about, you know, going back to the way it was. Then let's do a full analysis of that and go back to the way it was in the nineteen fifties. And, and find out, you know, what the freedoms were. Because I, I know it's changed a lot just in my, uh, in my fifty years. I- in terms of what you can do and what you can't do. And so, uh, you know, I, 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 I welcome the threat. And we'll, we'll look into it and we'll represent the public as best we can.
Well, everything out there is so skewed in the way it's treated now. I mean, you know, in nineteen, in the nineteen nineties, they did a. An appraisal on everything out there. And you get like the ski club, the boat club and maybe the marina. But, but those two in particular are treated as, um, like a special, a special area. Where I think they pay like twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand dollars per year, it's like ski club, it would pay thirty thousand dollars per year. Lease to the, um, to the county or to the BOR. That thirty thousand dollars, they then turn around and they charge a thousand dollars per member. They have a hundred members, so they make a hundred thousand dollars. And then that seventy thousand that they, they gain out of that is what they use to keep up the grounds, run their kitchen, do all, you know. It's just the yearly running of it. You go over to the trailer court and, um, that's on the lottery system. You don't get a choice who you sell to. You get five names who you sell to. You go to the cabins, you don't, you can have. You can sell it by yourself. You can put a realtor out there. You can do it however you want and sell it. But the trailer court itself, they're paying off that appraisal, they're paying over three thousand. It's like thirty-one hundred dollars per, per season out there, per trailer. So you have thirty thousand being generated at ski club, but you've got like four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars being generated off the people in the, in the trailer court. There's like absolutely no rhyme or reason to the way things are being done out there.
Other than that they've been done for the last thirty years and their government and they're not going to change anything.
Well, and to that point, the person that's in charge out there has been out there for about fifty years. And I'm not saying he's set in his ways, but in that conversation when I left there, I got the impression he is set in his ways.
All right. Well, we'll, uh, we may not need to keep this on. The whatever the upcoming, but it's still a pending matter as far as I'm concerned. And, and we can maybe adjust it from lottery to BOR. We'll, I'll, I'll circle back with you. Anything else?
The only thing else I wanted to add is I'm, like Jim took off for two weeks. I'm leaving tomorrow for ten days. So the meeting on Thursday, I, I will not be here. I'll be in Jackson at meetings. So.
Commissioner Mellon.
Uh, like, uh, Commissioner Real said, I've been kind of gone for, checked out for a little while. Trying to stay updated as much as possible, but I don't have anything from the outside boards or meetings that I've tended to. Present for the group, good of the group. So. I'll leave it at that. Try to get us back on schedule.
So I'll talk about a couple of things, but the first thing is. To invite Mr. Lamberson, uh, up to the table and we're going to talk about a fireplace. At the Casper Mountain Trail Center. People in this community, uh, didn't like our value engineering. That crossed a couple of things. Well, maybe they were fine with bits and pieces, but they were not fine with us crossing off the. Sixty-five thousand dollar fireplace. Um, so very pleased to have you here today. Can you give us an update?
Who's got him?
Is that going to work?
All right. Yeah, uh, so much for ahead of schedule, eh? I was coming down the mountain. I heard that and hit the gas. Our friend wasn't there to pull me over either. Says he was here. All right. So, um, anyway, yeah, if you picture, we've actually got some renderings of what we've been up to. And I just want to show you this first. Where that fireplace sits right now is right now scheduled to be a blank wall. And, uh, the Casper Nordic Club said, what do we do? I says, well, let's get some support and see what we can do. And we've just had enormous support from individuals, professionals. Businesses around the community who are helping Casper Nordic, uh, get a fireplace in the building. So this, uh, this is a forty-five second movie, but I like it. Take a look. No, I'm, I'm the, the blonde getting a hug. It's my pizza you'll see on the table. So anyway, that's what we propose. I could real quick.
This is an actual photograph of the fireplace.
So we are, um, well along on the design phase of the project. We've got some engineering to do. We do? Yeah, we've had people come forward to help us on this. It was, it's been unbelievable. It's clearly something people are willing to, they really want it and they want to invest in it. We have to get some shop drawings done. That's moving along nicely. So, costs. The, the few things we pinned down, this, this fireplace is an actual capable of heating three thousand square feet. It is a heating appliance. Um, it's thermostatically controlled. There's actually out at Porter's, you can see this exact unit working. But, um, it's, it's not just decoration. Uh, and it, it will provide extra heat for the building and obviously some wonderful atmosphere. The, uh, fireplace flew permit, um, the, the mantle. And, uh, all that basic stuff is going to be about nineteen thousand dollars with permitting and installation. And then on top of that, we've got all this beautiful stonework. There's a fellow in the community who bought too much and he's given us enough stonework to do what's on there. Um, it's all granite, beautiful mined out of Montana, corners, everything. And it's on his house and in his fireplace. We, we have a picture of that too. It's, it's gorgeous. And, uh, he didn't build the garage he thought he'd build and he said, okay. So that was a huge, um, contribution. Other things like, uh, the engineering, uh, on the actually masonry work, the construction, those are coming at us. So what I need from you guys is just to say, go ahead. We have enough funding to do this whole project. It's not going to cost the county anything. And it's going to be far superior to the fireplace that was value engineered out. So nice work. This, this is going to be really nice. So that's where we're at. I've been in touch with the contractor. They know we're, we're kind of all in the loop, but, um, we'd like to get this moving. And, um, like I say, this community's put together enough money to do it right. And, um, the, I mean, the money's in the account. So Casper Nordic is ready to roll with this project.
Great. Well, good job. I know you and a couple of others have really taken the lead. Um, and so thank you for. Uh, what is your continued, um, passion for Casper Mountain in general? But also the lodge and, and this fireplace specifically. Um, I, I do know you've been in touch with the, um, the contractor. I've been in touch with the contractor to say, you know, be thinking about a, a fireplace because I think we're going to do it. I think that what we're looking for is a, the, the engineer stamp or the shop drawings. And then I think we can, uh, do a change order, um, have our architect, uh, do a change order. But, but commissioners, I've been in the loop on this. Um, you guys not as much. So I thought it'd be an opportunity for you to ask questions of Mr. Lamberson if you have them.
Please.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yeah, John, this would be either for you or for, uh, Bruce. Uh, thank you for coming down, Mr. Lamberson.
Sure.
The, um, one of the reasons we, that was value edited out was because of the foundation costs. For the weight of all that stone and that mantle and, and everything. Is, is the, the group including their costs of covering that foundation as well?
It's in my wallet.
Okay.
Got it.
Good. No, seriously.
No, seriously. Yeah, I, we don't anticipate, um, you know, this is going to be. An expensive project, but it's a beauty. And no, we're, we're, uh, again, everybody's saying, what do you need? I mean, we had, we've got a lot of support, but as we stand right now, it looks like we have the money we need. For the additional concrete rebar, the reinforcing. It'll depend. And Bob Lower's doing, of course, because he's the engineer for the whole state of Wyoming. He did all the original engineering work. So he's going to redline a few things and, and fix up. We've got a different, I mean, the depth of fireplace is different than the old one. The stonework is considerably different.
It looks significantly larger.
Yeah.
And so more weight. So that's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
It'll be more, it'll be part of the package. What, and it'll be gas.
Yes, it'll be propane. And because it's a county building and because this is a heating appliance too. I would say this is quite a bit down the road. When we contract or when the county contracts for propane, I'd have two thousand gallon tanks up there instead of one. And I'd have it with Blakeman who fills up me all the time and goes to Hogadon all the time.
You guys buy the extra propane tank then?
We can find one. No, Blakeman will bring you one. It's no big deal. But you can use the summer fill program. And you're not going to freak out because nobody looked.
Okay.
They're going to watch. They're going to watch after.
And they do that. Foundation is the main thing, main concern was because.
Yeah, but no.
That was one of the big costs.
That's up to lower and we'll pay for what we need to do.
Thank you.
Bruce, I know this is kind of, it can go either direction. Is this going to be vent out the wall or are we going to have a another?
No, it's a horizontal.
So it's gonna, is?
Vent. It'll go out the wall.
Okay.
Fifteen feet up.
How many?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Out of twenty foot.
Okay. Well, no, that's good because if it's.
We're not going to put it into the snow.
Go through the roof and, and that's.
Yeah, there won't be any roof penetration.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. So that, that'll help and that'll be high enough that we don't have to worry about any snow removed or anything else. So, okay.
I just want to say thank you. I know what you've done here and it's great and I'm glad you're on the mountain and you're looking after things and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. And I just note, I'm not the, there's some heroes doing some work out there.
Well, and I thank, I thank all of them too.
What we did, no, it's, it's a great project. It's one of the ones, you don't have to explain much, but thanks.
So Commissioner Millen. Have brought up a good point and that is. We probably, and I think the community would probably want to thank the Nordic Club for this effort. And we were just talking about a plaque for the building earlier today anyhow. Do you, do you think that putting the club's name on that, you know, the type of exterior building plaque? You know, we could put something inside too, right next to it, but what do you think your preference would be? And, and the other commissioners haven't. You know, weighed in on this yet, but what are your thoughts on being recognized for this?
I think recognition is appropriate. I think many individuals gave money anonymously and quite a lot of money. And they don't care. They just want a fireplace. I think that would have to go back to the Nordic Club. When I say we, it's really the Nordic Club. I'm just, you know, this guy, but I think that could be discussed and see. Yeah, I wouldn't say it's not on the, on, on the things we want to look at. This isn't going to real, realistically, none of this is going to happen until October, November, other than the, the foundation work. I mean, it's going to be a while. And we have time to think about that. But I haven't right now, other than it has come up a little bit and some people say sure and some people say no. I mean. The, it's sort of be a no brainer to just say, you know. Fireplace provided by Casper Nordic Club and its supporters or something like that. That'd be easy. If we get to individuals, we'd have to check. We're in the process. Once, once we get through what's going on right now, we'll be sending out some thank yous, some kind of before and after picture in a little card. Recognizing, you know, the people who've helped us along on all this and we're not done yet. Obviously we're just getting started, but. I don't know, but yeah, I mean, I think we should definitely discuss that.
That's true. Not really, you know, it's a significant amount. And so it's a matter of just recognizing the efforts and everything that everybody's done, right? We're not asking you to buy the plaque.
But, but I, I said I wasn't going to ask any money.
No, we've already got that going. So we, I think it'd look.
So you'd like to see it?
I'd like to see with you guys putting the money, money forward and the effort that you've done. To see this fireplace come into existence, then yeah, I, I, I think you should be recognized personally on the, on the overall plaque for the whole building.
We'll see what the club wants to do and let you know.
The other four may say something different. Yeah, whatever.
We'll have a bake sale. We'll buy a plaque. You know, the other thing I might point out is that the original fireplace had a lot of brick on the outside of the building. We're not doing that. We're not funding that. It's the outside of the building. It served no purpose. I mean, I'd rather put the effort into the inside and have a wow. Fireplace when people walk in. So there won't, you know, the outside will be the plain building. It's, it is, but. When you walk in the door, I think people are going to be very pleased. It'll set a tone.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And what, yeah, we'll keep the plaque on the agenda. We'll do it.
Great.
Might have your guys' name on it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
Yep. I think that's it. You've got the green.
Thanks. Here we go. Watch it happen.
Don't speak going up the mountain.
I only did that once in 50 years. Thanks.
So the only other thing that I wanted to mention. Well, I, I think there are actually a couple of things, but the land swap with city. I think we're at our next meeting, looking to have. Our, our ducks in a row so that there'll be a presentation. For the, the, this board on the different parcels. I've been working with Heather on that and I, I have talked to the city manager about. About us considering it at that time. My expectation is that there won't be big issues with. Many of these parcels, if any, my expectation is that we'll probably split the. Parcel over in the Mills Fort Casper area, right down the center line of the river. So that we can save for a later date discussions with respect to the north of the center line of the river. But, but Heather is working with the different departments that might have perspective or expertise. As it relates to one or more of the, the parcels. Wyoming Medical Center and Banner Health. I'll be meeting with the group on Thursday. They're having some people from Banner come in to town and there, there continues to be. Great concern with how healthcare, the condition and state of healthcare has diminished and decreased. In, I guess in, in a lot of respects here in the community. So I'll report back if there's progress or different ideas. I don't agree with Commissioner Laird that will automatically say yes, if they want to sell. The hospital. I, I think that the grass is always greener on the other side of the fence and we need to, you know, evaluate very closely. Any new hospital coming to town or maybe future commissions and the public will be. Not mad at previous county commissioner boards, but upset at this one too. So we need to be cautious on that. But I, I have had some conversations specifically about. Possibilities in, in that respect too. So we'll, we'll see how that develops and, and hope that it will. I don't really have anything else that I need to, to go over. You know, the outside boards, the health department, I think we'll be hearing from them very soon as it relates to the new building. And let's see, the airport have had some discussions with them. I do believe that the city of Casper will be participating in the M R Gs. I'm not sure at what level, but, but I, I'm. I'm, I'm optimistic about that.
Commissioner North.
I got cut off because we got talking about property taxes, which is always a challenge.
But wait, there's more. Okay.
Yeah. Well, what I was going to say is that the, the statewide shooting complex, the R F P will be out. It was supposed to be out yesterday. And now it's supposed to be out next week, but it's going to be very interesting because the committee. Instead of working as a committee and coming up with one game plan, each individual. Person on the committee is going to come up with their own stuff. So there's no telling what's going to come out of that. So. We're all waiting with bated breath to kind of see what goes forth. So just thought I'd give you guys a heads up on that and let you know where we were.
I just have one short thing, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to see the, all the contract documents on the sale of the hospital be put back on our website. They were taken down at one time. I mentioned it to ex-chairman Freeo the other day about what he thought about it. I guess he'll say what he thinks, but. I'm hoping we can put that back up. So if the public wants to look at what happened, they can do it and they should because it's a public document.
Okay. Anything else? Then we are, our work session is adjourned and we will come back.